Monday evening, April 19th, and will everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gofos.
Here.
Councilmember Papen.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonia.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. Okay, due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed into Zoom, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, to start off this evening, we have several ceremonial items, and the first is Ramadan observance. And for that, we have a proclamation to read. And here it is. Whereas Ramadan commences at dusk on April 12th, 2021, and is the ninth month of the Muslim calendar year. And whereas Ramadan is the holy month of fasting and spiritual renewal for Muslims worldwide, and is observed with faithful intention, communal prayer, and reading of the Holy Quran scripture. And whereas this past year, local mosques and Islamic centers have made great sacrifices in suspending nonessential gatherings, and we commend them for continuing to support our community by adopting communal prayer and religious services to meet state and county health safety standards. And whereas Muslims are part of the fabric of our community, and the city of San Mateo sends their warmest wishes to Muslims across the Bay Area. And now therefore, I, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the City Council hereby recognize the commencement of Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak. Be it further resolved that the City of San Mateo acknowledges the onset of Ramadan and expresses its deepest respect to Muslims across California and throughout the world on this significant occasion. Signed, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor. All right, and we have a special guest with us, Salah Al Baraki, from the Government Relations Coordinator, Coordinator on the Council on American Islamic Relations. It's all yours.
Thank you. Just a little correction. My name is Salah Al Bakri, resident of San Mateo for the last 27 years. I am the Executive Director of Support Life Foundation, a community foundation that's very active on the peninsula and throughout the Bay Area. I am also a member of the Yassin Foundation, which is on the peninsula, serving two centers, one in Belmont and one in the city of Berlin game with a community center there. Where I am not of the care, however, although I am a supporter of care, that was would have been Samina, and Samina is thought that I should have the mic since she does not live in the city. I love our city and I love our people. I guess I was asked to come and say a couple of words about our Ramadan. And I share with you what I feel as a Muslim. I mean, the mechanics of it, you can learn on your own, and since we have very limited time, we don't have time for that. But the whole idea behind Ramadan is that it's a real boot camp where the ideas, we as humans, we're spending 11 months of the year nourishing our bodies with all kinds of sports and food and entertainment and whims and desires. And then we come to one month a year, and we say, maybe it's time for us to take a break on the body and get the other part of us, our soul, to nourish. And actually, for anybody who's been fasting regularly, you find that right now we're towards the end of our first week of the month. You would really find that you have changed internally. You're all of a sudden, there's an incredible feeling of empathy towards creation of all its forms. Small things make you cry, little things move you. There is an incredible amount of pervasive empathy and feeling of the sufferings of others. And hence, it's the month of contributions. The Muslim community on the peninsula has been very active in helping its local community. The Yassin Foundation has been holding for the last 14 years the Food Bank in partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank. Now, the Support Life Foundation has been doing the same with distribution on covering the entire Bay Area with this You're Not Alone campaign. And for the last month, has been holding vaccination, mobile vaccination clinics in partnership with FEMA and the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. And we're hoping to bring that goodness to our cities around the peninsula, namely San Mateo, Berlin game, South San Francisco, and Daly City on the peninsula. Already, we've held mega clinics in Oakland, Fremont, Hayward, Pleasanton, and Union City. And so that's what we have for you tonight. I wish everybody good time. I hate to kill your time. I know you guys on a very limited time schedule, but I'd be very happy to respond to any questions. I'm grateful that you're acknowledging this with this proclamation. May God bless us, bless all of us. We love San Mateo. We love the downtown. My kids grew up here. They're always hanging on Third Avenue and B Street. If I can't find any of them, it's they're usually in one of these cafes. And you know, we're the envy of other cities where we managed to turn to our town to a bustling, but caring community. And I hope with many initiatives on the table, we'd also make it a caring community for the elderly, for the immigrant population, for the all those people. May God bless you. I will stop here.
Thank you so much for sharing all of that. I wish you very happy Ramadan.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening to you.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the next ceremonial item, and this is Mayor's for Peace Free of Nuclear Weapons Proclamation. And I'm gonna read this right now. Okay. Whereas the United States Conference of Mayors has unanimously adopted Mayor's for Peace Resolution for 13 consecutive years, and on June 11th, 2018, called on the United States government to join the treaty for the prohibition of nuclear weapons and whereas without the participation of the United States, Russia, and other nuclear armed states on July 7th, 2017, by vote of 122 to one, the majority of the world's countries adopted this historic treaty which prohibits the possession development, the possession development testing, use, and threat of nuclear weapons. And whereas any nuclear war will have no victors, and as such should be completely removed from any defense strategy. The USCm calls on the President and Congress to reverse federal spending priorities and to redirect funds currently allocated to these weapons and unwarranted military spending to support safe and resilient cities, to fully fund the community, block development grants, to mitigate climate change, to create jobs by rebuilding our nation's infrastructure, and to ensure basic human services for all, including education, environmental protection, food security, housing, and healthcare. And considering the recent and ongoing tragedies of citizens being abused and criminally assaulted by both their fellow citizens as well as those entrusted to protect them, demands for more funds be allocated, demands more funds to be allocated to the elimination of race bias down to the most local level of municipal governments. Therefore, I, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of the City Council hereby join the call to the United States Conference of Mayors and join the Mayors for Peace Movement to build a world free of these unusable weapons. Mayors for Peace, signed Eric Rodriguez, Mayor. And we're joined by Mike Caggianno, who's gonna say a few words.
Hey, thank you so much for considering this. And again, the reason we're bringing this up is it's a poster child, perfect poster child of wacky priorities by our nation and many others that allocate funds for something that cannot be used, you know, dare not use it unless you want to eliminate the humanity from the planet, which some people they think is a better choice. But with the common sense working properly, hopefully, we redirect these things. I believe the bottom part, I guess it got cut off, was making these nuclear swords into domestic plowshares. That was how I actually ended my copy of this thing. And that says it all, you know, like we've got, I think it's good as municipalities appear to be the target for most of these weapons. I think it is incumbent on municipalities to say, you know, we don't really like being the target of somebody else's folly, you know, and especially if it's going to end badly for everyone, which is exactly what will happen. So with that, I'll turn it back to you. And if there's any other questions, our peace organization, Peace Action of San Mateo County would like to contribute the first 10 years' membership to this organization on behalf of the City of San Mateo. It's all of $18 a year, so don't think we're breaking our bank. But we would like to offer that in good faith for your consideration of this worthy membership for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us, Mike. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, we have another proclamation. We got a lot of important topics to discuss this evening. And this one is an Earth Month proclamation, and I'm gonna read it right now. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970 with the goal of inspiring an appreciation of our nation's natural resources through conservation and protection. And whereas this year marks the 51st annual review of and commitment to the principles of Earth Day. And whereas the City of San Mateo celebrates Earth Day by extending it to the month of April in recognition of the commitment to environmental stewardship. And whereas during the month of April, our appreciation for the natural world reawakens, reminding us each day, we can renew our commitment to environmental conservation and the implementation of sustainable practices. And whereas the earth provides habitats for all creatures, and we must acknowledge that our actions have an impact on the environment degradation and global health and climate change. And whereas the actions we take on the individual level through education, public policy, and consumer activism can help our planet heal and thrive. And whereas it's easy to forget how much we depend on our planet, and the City of San Mateo encourages residents to implement practices to preserve and protect our environment and shape the future of our environmental security. Now therefore, I, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Earth Month. And with us this evening, we have James Eggers from the Sierra Club.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see him in the panelist list or attendees list.
Okay, well, I'm sure he had some very important things to say. We are gonna move on to the last ceremonial item. And this is for Sergeant Al Basay, Police Department Retirement Commendatory Resolution. And I have a proclamation. Okay, resolved by the City of, was resolved by the Council of the City of California, or San Mateo, California, that whereas Sergeant Al Basay has served the community of San Mateo with distinction and professionalism for almost 32 years, working tirelessly to preserve the safety and security of our community. And whereas as an officer, Al compiled an impressive amount of experience and knowledge, working in a variety of assignments, including patrol officer, canine officer, with his part, with his canine partner Hercules, as a field training officer and as a detective. And whereas in August 1991, Al received the department's Best Arrest Award for his arrest of a commercial burglar that had been breaking into and victimizing numerous businesses in the city's central business district. And whereas in June 2005, Al was promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant. And he has served our community in that role for 16 years, working in several specialty sergeant assignments, including Field Training Program Sergeant, Detective Sergeant, and Training and Recruitment Sergeant. And whereas in January 2006, Al received a Captain Commendation for leading his team of officers in a proactive policing operation focused on vehicle burglars in the Los Prados neighborhood, which resulted in the arrest of several suspects preserving safety of our community. And whereas throughout his entire career, Al has selflessly worked to support employee labor associations, specifically the Police Officer Association and Sergeants Association, serving as the POAs President for five years and President of the Sergeants Association for four years. And whereas over the last four years, as a Training and Recruitment Sergeant, Al has supported the Police Department by overseeing all hiring efforts, hiring over 80 employees, allowing the department to maintain staffing levels to be able to provide the highest level of service to the San Mateo community. And whereas as one of the finest SMPD peace officers who has dedicated his time and life to public service, Al deserves the highest praise and recognition from his peers. Now therefore, the City of San Mateo does hereby confer upon Sergeant Al Basay its highest commendation for the exemplary manner in which he has performed his duties as a member of the San Mateo Police Department, and further extends its sincere appreciation to his wife Alicia and his daughters Sophia and Gianna for their loving support of him. It is hereby ordered that the City Clerk cause this resolution to be engrossed so that it can be presented to Sergeant Al Basay as an expression of the Council's appreciation for his dedicated service to the City of San Mateo. And I hope we have him here to say a few words. Yes, here we go. It's all yours, Al. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. It's been an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of San Mateo over the last 32 years. Time goes by fast, let me tell you. One day you're a rookie and the next thing it's you're the old guy on the block getting ready to retire. So I just want to say thank you. Everybody here is family. I tell that, you know, when I was doing all the hiring, the city is unique. We're a family and it's a great place to work. I tell everybody it's a great place to work because of that aspect of being family. So everyone here is going to be missed, but it's now time to move on to, you know, the next adventure in my life. So thank you very much.
Enjoy that next adventure and thank you so much for your service. Okay. All right, we are going to move on to the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, can you please read the items on the Consent Calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number five, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number six, amend Municipal Code Section, placing certain objects in the public right-of-way ordinance adoption. Item number seven, Proposed Firework Amendments Ordinance Adoption. Item number eight, San Mateo Public Library Foundation Operating Lease Amendment. Item number nine, Citywide Street Rehabilitation Package 1C Project Phase One Agreement. Item number 10, Citywide Street Reconstruction Phase One Project Amendment. Item number 11, Pavement Management and Smooth Streets Program Management Services Agreement. Item number 12, Pacific Boulevard Force Main Project Agreement. Item number 13, Private Development and Right-of-Way Support Services Agreement Amendment. Item number 14, Wastewater Treatment Plant Centrifuges Contract Change Order and Amendment. Item number 15, Central Park Tennis Court Garage Repair Budget Appropriation and Change Order. Item 16, Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Grant Acceptance. Item 17, Police Department Budgeted Positions Reallocations. Item 18, COVID-19 Update. And item 19, Caltrain Project Funding Letters of Support.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the Council who would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? Please raise your hand. As seen, none. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any Consent Calendar item? Now would be the time to raise your hand, and this is for Consent Calendar items only.
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain the motion.
I move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Again.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Councilmember Gofos.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonia.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to a public comment period, and members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided at a later time. And I see a couple of hands.
The first speaker is Wendy Chow.
Hi, Wendy Cho. Thank you. Esteemed Councilmembers, my name is Wendy Cho. I live at 225 42nd Avenue in San Mateo. Climate change is my top priority as a constituent, and I believe that our government at all levels has a role to play in lowering greenhouse gas emissions. I thank those council members who have already expressed support for the introduced, reintroduced, I should say, Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, known as HR 2307. I believe this policy works well for two reasons. It's fast and it's fair. We know from economic studies and models that putting a fee on fossil fuels results in fast and efficient declines in emissions. This speed is what we need to combat the climate crisis. Second, by including a dividend, households are protected from cost of energy increases, with lower income households actually coming out ahead. This economic fairness is what keeps this policy from being just another tax burden. And it's right for polluters to pay for their pollution. I urge you to please agendize our constituent request for the Council to endorse HR 2307. By working together, we have the best chance of protecting our livable community. Thank you for allowing me to contribute these comments today.
Our next speaker is Rosen McAlurney.
Hi, my name is Roshi McAlurney, and I'm a senior at Aragon High School and a constituent of San Mateo. I'm a member of the Citizens Climate Lobby. And I joined because climate change is something that's really important to me as a young person. It's an impending disaster, and we really need to do something about it. And I believe that HR 2307 is the thing that we need to do about it. It's effective, it's fast acting, and it's market-based. I also like that it's bipartisan and isn't divisive, which I think is what we need right now in politics. A majority of the council members already responded to another constituent Allen's letter saying that you'll endorse HR 2307. And I just like to thank the members of the City Council for replying so quickly and for pledging support for HR 2307. Because it's a really important bill, and I really appreciate your commitment to climate action. So thank you for that.
Next speaker is Joshua Wang.
Hi, my name is Joshua Wang. I'm also a senior at Aragon High School and a resident of San Mateo. I'm also a member of Citizens Climate Lobby, San Mateo Youth Chapter. And I joined CCL because solving the climate crisis is the greatest challenge humanity faces, and I want to be part of that fight. Climate change is super important to both people my age, but also this city that's vulnerable to global warming's consequences like rising sea levels and frequent wildfires. Because of that, I look forward to your consideration to endorse HR 2307 to encourage comprehensive, expedient, and effective federal policies to save our planet. Thank you for this opportunity for me to speak to you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna close a public comment at this time, and we're gonna move on to old business. Item number 20, Budget Update and Appropriation and American Rescue Plan Funds Discussion. And we have with us Rich Lee, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thank you. The item before you this evening, the purpose is threefold. First is to provide an update on the current fiscal year. Second is to provide a preview for next fiscal year's budget. And third is a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Funds. So first, we're gonna look at the general fund for the current fiscal year. There's really three topics to discuss. The first is an update on the VLF shortfall. For VLF is the property tax and Lua vehicle license fees. The previous estimate reflected a county-wide shortfall of approximately $69.5 million. And the city's share of that was $4 million. Based on the latest information we have from the county, unfortunately, that shortfall is going up to almost $100 million. And that's largely due to the amount of supplemental tax revenues that have come in, which did result in one specific school district changing from non-basic aid to basic aid status. Because of that change, of the $13.2 million that the city is owed for VLF, we will only be receiving $7.5 million. We did anticipate that there would be a shortfall for VLF in the current fiscal year. However, even that amount, we had budgeted $10 million. Now we're going to be $2.5 million less than that budgeted amount. Similar to previous fiscal years, the county, on behalf of all of the local cities, will be filing a claim with the state for the current fiscal year VLF shortfall in the fall of this year, and it's for consideration in the state's 2023 budget. So to emphasize, there's a two-year gap between the year in which the shortfall occurs and the year in which the state considers appropriation in the state budget to make the county whole. The second topic for the current fiscal year is the 2% TOT Fund. There is a specific fund that accounts for 2% of the total 14% in the city's TOT rate. That was a special election that occurred approximately 10 years ago. And what has occurred because of the pandemic is a significant reduction in revenues. Prior to the pandemic, this fund accounted for approximately $1.2 million. Based on current year-to-date revenues, this fund will likely end the year with only $200,000 in revenue, so about a million dollar shift. The second is this fund accounts for ongoing expenditures, primarily the debt service on the Police Administration building. That's a variable rate lease revenue bond, and that's about $600,000 per year. And there's other fees that are associated with that. There are one-time CIP commitments for this fund, namely the Fire Station 25 and Burrell Park Development Alt Hole. That's $5.4 million in commitments. And both of those projects are nearing completion. Because of the drop in revenue and the funds commitments ongoing and one-time, we're anticipating a a negative ending fund balance of one point nine million dollars. Uh because of that negative net position, the general fund uh will likely need to um offset that loss via a transfer out to Fund fifty six. The third item um for the council's information is of course the American Rescue Plan. Uh the city's uh latest estimate is eighteen point six four million dollars. Uh that will be received half in the current fiscal year, half in the next fiscal year, uh half of which of course is nine point three two million dollars. Um to help the council track uh what has changed since the last update in terms of revenue, that's a nine million dollar net increase. That's first, of course, the million and a half dollars, um an additional shortfall for the V L F. However, that's uh offset by the nine point three million dollars that the city will receive in American Rescue Plan money. And what I did not mention in the staff report is based on the previous estimate that was provided in October, it looks like we'll be receiving roughly one point two million dollars more in real property transfer tax. However, I want to make sure that this is taken in with the context of the long-term revenue uh outlook for the city. Over the next five years, we are looking at roughly a fifty eight million dollar loss in revenue. So while the near-term revenue uh projection is favorable uh over the next five years, uh this needs to be taken in in context. So uh on the expenditure side for the general fund, as I mentioned before, increasing by a net of just under a million dollars. Uh first, that's with the one point nine million dollar transfer out to Fund fifty six. And then we do have about one million dollars in additional savings that we think we will realize by the end of the fiscal year. So with those changes to the general fund for the current fiscal year, uh we anticipate ending the year with uh one point three to the good, so adding one point three million dollars to fund balance. When you compare that to where we thought we were going to be during the mid-year presentation that was uh provided the council at the end of January, that's about eight point one million dollars better than where we thought we were going to be. Looking at uh a preview to for the general fund, actually, let me pause there. See if there's any questions from the council on the current fiscal year for the general fund.
Do we have any questions? We're not seeing any questions, so.
Okay, thank you. I will move on to the preview for next fiscal year for the general fund, uh starting off with property tax. Uh just, this should come as no surprise. Unfortunately, uh the C P I, that's the California C P I or the C C P I, uh the change in that from October of twenty eighteen to October of twenty nineteen was uh one point oh three six percent. Um pursuant to Prop thirteen, uh the limit uh per fiscal year, sorry, per uh per year is two percent. And there's been, as noted in the staff report, several years in which that has occurred where it's been less than two percent. When you add in any changes that have happened to the property tax roll, including new developments, uh properties that have uh sold, we believe that the city should be able to reach its long-term assumption for uh growth and assessed value of four percent. But just know that the change in C P I does have an impact on the city's uh growth and assessed value. Um additionally, also impacting the city's property tax um revenue projection of sixty six point two million uh are excess E R A F, which has been discussed previously with the council. Uh we are awaiting guidance from State Controller's Office on um how the counties, uh California counties are to calculate E R A F appropriately. And uh we should get additional information tomorrow during our San Mateo Finance Officers Group from the State Controller, from the County Controller. Uh also, as previously mentioned, uh the property tax and Lua V L F shortfall. Uh of course, anticipating additional and a growing shortfall unfortunately for that revenue source. Moving on to sales tax, the city's number two revenue source, uh we foresee uh ongoing recovery for the city's tax base. Uh for the local one percent, that's the Bradley Burns, uh just over seven percent recovery. Uh and then, of course, the local one quarter percent, that's Measure S, uh greater recovery there, ten percent. Uh I should emphasize that we're looking at about a three-year recovery to get back to the twenty eighteen nineteen pre-pandemic baseline. So while this looks favorable, we are still not back to where we once were uh prior to the pandemic. Uh one of the few bright spots that I have in this presentation is uh property transfer tax. Uh as the council is well aware, uh the housing market demand is ongoing despite the pandemic. Uh coupled with the low interest, historic low uh interest rates that we have, that's really benefited the city in terms of property transfer tax. Uh we anticipate that that will um continue for next fiscal year, so we've uh set the assumption to this the city's ten-year average of eight and a half million dollars. And based on the year-to-date revenues, again, we are looking at about nine point four million dollars for the current fiscal year. Um switching gears to the T O T, unfortunately, this is more of the same as has been presented to council October of last year, January of this year. Uh based on information that we have from uh various economic um analyses from either UCLA Anderson or um uh representatives from S F O or the Visitors Bureau, we're looking at a very long recovery for tourism, especially uh for tourism that's driven by business travel. And that is really the um main driver for San Mateo's T O T revenues. Um really, the shift to the virtual space for business meetings um could be detrimental to the long-term recovery of this revenue source for the city. Uh as council is uh well aware, uh the county is looking at purchasing two hotels that are located in San Mateo. And there is one hotel in our stock that has been closed for well over a year. And finally, the second half of the American Rescue Plan um accounts for nearly three quarters of the revenue that we anticipate receiving for intergovernmental revenue. That's revenue that we uh receive from other governmental units. Switching gears to the general fund expenditures for next fiscal year, uh focusing first on salaries, wages and benefits, which we are projecting at sixty seven point two million dollars. First, in comparison to the uh estimate for the current fiscal year end, that's a three point four million dollar increase. Um the majority of that comes from uh the parking, downtown parking and security fund. Um I'll discuss that in greater detail in a few slides. Uh but that is uh the lion's share of the driver behind the increase in salaries, wages and benefits. Uh also folded into the position budget or the salaries, wages and benefits is um one part of the fiscal sustainability plan. Uh as the council may recall, uh a part of that is one million dollars in permanent elimination of vacant positions. Uh I want to make a note that that is still maintaining the same service levels and really leveraging the new technology that we have in place to maintain that service level. Um also driving the increase, the city did honor um all of the the current fiscal year negotiated salary increases which are occurring all throughout the current fiscal year or are to come and at the end of this fiscal year. And that is another driver behind the increase uh for next fiscal year's payroll costs. The city did reach um M O U agreements with its management unit and the general unit. Uh we achieved our concession targets and we are in negotiations with the Police Officers Association and S E I U. Uh I want to note that of the three point four million dollar increase, if the city is unable to achieve the concession targets with the units that we're currently at the table with, then that could change. Uh looking, a quick look at the the pension unfunded liability, uh the thirteen point one million dollars. Just want to point out that that is the loan payment back to Calpers. So that is not uh the normal cost, but rather the unfunded pension liability, the payment on the unfunded pension liability that we have. Um that also does not reflect any of the pension investment losses that we had from last fiscal year where they only earned four point seven percent relative to a seven percent discount rate. I do have some good news, um as of the market closing April sixth. Uh they have a year-to-date return on investment of sixteen and a half percent. Uh if that were to come to fruition by the end of the fiscal year, if they're able to hold that, uh that can largely offset the losses that were um recognized in last fiscal year. And finally, they are, in February, they kicked off their asset liability management cycle. That's where the Calpers Board looks at their capital market assumptions, what level of risk, uh investment risk they're willing to take. And uh that's something that that I will be watching very closely. Uh they're beginning stakeholder meetings right right now. And in fact, uh next week, they'll be holding a stakeholder meeting on the asset liability management cycle. And uh this is something that could result in a potential reduction of the discount rate. If uh you go back about four or five years, the Calpers did reduce the discount rate from seven and a half to seven percent. Uh that had a significant impact on the city. If Calpers, as noted in the staff report, if Calpers were to uh reduce the discount rate down from seven percent to six and a half percent, uh that would automatically overnight, and again, I'm coupling this with investment losses from nineteen twenty. And if Calpers is able to hold its current uh return on investment for the current fiscal year uh overnight, if they change their discount rate to six and a half percent, that would increase our unfunded pension liability by seventeen million dollars. So more to come on that. I'll definitely keep council apprised of developments as they happen. The city's contribution uh to the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, uh just a quick recap, uh based on the J P A agreement with the cities of Belmont and Foster City, San Mateo was responsible for sixty percent of that operating contribution. And that's estimated to be twenty five point two million dollars. That is an increase of six percent compared to the current fiscal year. Uh that's largely driven by the negotiated um salary increases for local twenty four hundred, uh similar to the city. S M C Fires honoring that negotiated increase. On top of that operating contribution, there is six point one million dollars in legacy costs. Uh principally, that includes the um a legacy unfunded pension liability that remains with San Mateo uh for former fire department uh employees. I mentioned previously in the presentation about the downtown parking and security fund. Uh during the last budget update to the council in January, I mentioned that uh how parking revenues were underperforming. Again, largely due to the pandemic, uh the camp, we really looked at two options. The first was to uh have the general fund transfer um out a subsidy effectively for this fund. And the second option, which we are moving forward with, starting in July, uh similar to the golf fund that occurred in twenty eighteen nineteen, uh the downtown parking and security fund will become a sub-fund of the general fund. Uh what that means is because of the um anticipated results of next fiscal year, the general fund is going to have to absorb that two million dollars in that loss uh for next fiscal year. While we anticipate that subsidy to um reduce as the economy recovers and as parking revenues recover, um that's something that directly impacts the general fund. I'm moving on to, actually, let me pause there. Is there any questions or comments about next fiscal year's um budget preview?
Not seeing any questions.
Thank you. Then I will move on to the American Rescue Plan. I again, I mentioned eighteen point six four million dollars for the city of San Mateo. As uh the city manager had discussed in the previous COVID update to the council, these are the four major categories uh that are eligible costs for the city to use the American Rescue Plan money. Uh as you see in the footnote below, um there's quite a bit of time duration for the council to use these funds. So I definitely want to stress that there's no rush uh to spend this money right away. I'm going to go into some detail on each of these four categories uh to talk about actions that the council has taken um in the recent months. So first, in the response to the public health emergency, as the council may recall, the council has contributed seven hundred thousand dollars to S M C Strong. That's for uh local business grants and of course, the restaurant brewery and winery um program. And then the LEAP program uh run by our Parks and Recreation Department, where we spent approximately eight hundred thousand dollars uh to provide a much-needed service to our community. Uh also, within the uh context of responding to the public health emergency, we have the parklet program. We spent roughly three hundred thousand dollars in one-time costs. Um we're also supported by um largely staff resources. So I definitely want to uh tip my hat to our Public Works Department, our Engineering Division that um very quickly came up with the design for the the parklet program as well as our uh facilities staff that overnight uh set up those parklets. So definitely want to acknowledge their their work there. Uh second, also on the topic of staff resources, we redeployed nine F T E uh to place sixteen hundred uh outreach calls to our businesses to connect them with local, state and federal resources. Uh more on the monetary side, uh council um ongoing, on an ongoing basis, has waived business tax penalties and interest to really provide some much-needed relief to our local businesses. Also, along the same lines, the council has approved um the downtown San Mateo Association B I D rates of a reduction of fifty percent. And then finally, um provided some reduction or abatement of rent for our commercial tenants. Uh on the second category, in terms of premium pay for essential workers, uh March fifteenth, the council adopted an ordinance to provide hazard pay to uh large grocery stores and large drugstores. Uh you could use uh some of the American Rescue Plan money to provide grants to these employers. Uh probably, probably the most impactful of these um potential categories for American Rescue Plan money is revenue losses. Uh on the far left, uh that's the type of revenue. Uh and then on the column next to it, that's the pre-pandemic fiscal year. That's the revenue that we received uh for the particular revenue type. Uh in the intervening columns, uh those are either actual revenues that are audited financials for the uh nineteen twenty estimates for the current fiscal year and then projections uh through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. And as you can see, uh over the next five years, for these four revenue sources, we're anticipating nearly sixty million dollars in revenue losses. Uh if you even go a little bit further, just for last fiscal year and the current fiscal year, um the council could simply claim uh the American Rescue Plan money solely for revenue losses, and that would encapsulate our entire allocation of American Rescue Plan money. Council could also use the American Rescue Plan money for water, wastewater or broadband infrastructure projects. Uh this is, this is just a uh brief amalgamation of various unfunded C I P projects throughout the city. And um again, to contrast this, these are one-time projects, because it uh there's a nexus to uh one-time revenue that we're getting from the federal stimulus. So I want to um kind of close it with the general fund long-term financial plan. And there's a couple of highlights I want to point out to the council. Uh just to orient the council, the um the line graph uh illustrates the revenues, anticipated revenues and expenditures over the next ten years. That's associated with the primary axis on the left. Uh the bar graph, that represents the general fund reserves, and that's associated with the secondary axis on the right. So first, this plan reflects first the transfer out to the T O T um two percent T O T fund for the current fiscal year. Second, it also incorporates the add the addition of the downtown parking and security fund as a general fund sub-fund. Third, it anticipates a prolonged recovery of T O T revenues. Uh we will be fortunate to get uh roughly half a million dollars by the end of the fiscal year in general fund T O T revenues. A very long recovery, by all the information and the estimates that we've been receiving to date, um it's going to be a very long recovery for the city's tourism industry. Uh finally, it does reflect um the American Rescue Plan money coming in in the current fiscal year and then four months later in next fiscal year. Um effectively, what this plan shows is the city using the American Rescue Plan money to partially offset our significant revenue losses. Uh the other thing I want to highlight is the rainy day reserve. So as you can see, from peak, our peak was the pre-pandemic year at fifty four million dollars. Uh then there's the trough at twenty five billion dollars. The difference between the peak to trough is thirty million dollars. That is the amount that we anticipate we're going to draw down on our rainy day reserve over that period of time. Uh because of that anticipated trend, uh we believe that the rainy, the appropriate rainy day reserve target is thirty million dollars. Uh as you can see, uh there are going to, starting As you can see, there are going to, starting in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we will dip down below the thirty million dollar target rate. And I want to illustrate one more point on this next slide. So this is basically the same information, but just put into a table with total revenues on the top line, total expenditures on the second line. And the difference between the two, difference between revenues and expenditures on the third line. On the fourth line, we have net reductions. Net reductions, it can be a combination of any of the following. It could be additional actual revenues that are above and beyond what was assumed. They could be additional revenues through revenue enhancement. Or it could be additional expenditure reductions or expenditure savings greater than what is projected in the forecast. Starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we are showing net reductions of three point two million dollars, and it closely, for the rest of the forecast, it closely follows that. Net reductions effectively show the city's structural deficit. And the third, and probably the most important point of these closing slides, the American Rescue Plan money does not resolve the city's long-term structural deficit. The American Rescue Plan money is one-time money. The city's requirements and demands for resources are ongoing. So I'm just going to go back to the previous slide to close this out. Given the city's ongoing structural deficit and anticipated outcomes over the next ten years, if it is of council interest to use American Rescue Plan funds for one-time costs or interests, in order to keep the rainy day reserve at the recommended target level by twenty thirty-one, the maximum capacity for one-time use of American Rescue Plan money would be about five million dollars. So I'm going to move to council actions. So first, the actions that we do need from the council, first, the recommendation to adopt a resolution appropriating one point nine million dollars of available fund balance of the general fund. That's to account for the transfer out to Fund Fifty-Six, the two percent TOT fund, due to significant TOT revenue losses and its ongoing and one-time commitments. Second, for council discussion, we are looking for any feedback or comments that council has on the preview for next fiscal year, as well as the long-term plan. It's of the council's option if they want to discuss one-time use of five million dollars, of up to five million dollars of American Rescue Plan for a yet-to-be-identified purpose. And I just want to stress that there is no decision required on that last optional item this evening. We can certainly have that at a future date. Again, I just wanted to reemphasize that deadline for use of the American Rescue Plan money is December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And with that, I'm going to stop my presentation. Welcome any questions in the council.
Thank you, Rich. Great, great last slide there with your smiling face. Do we have any questions from council? And I see one hand, and that is council member Gofles.
So Rich, Finance Director Lee. Really sick to my stomach right now, like I need to go get the tons. I'm not feeling good about what you just said. It doesn't feel like, doesn't feel like we're going to be able to give the normal raises to any of our employees that we're used to giving without dipping into the negative. There's a lot of money that we still owe out there, and revenues are going to be down for the foreseeable future. Did I, did I hear most of that correctly?
You heard absolutely correctly, yes.
On the back of a napkin, I was trying to figure out how to generate additional revenue, and it looks like we can solve this with about seventy-five additional electronic billboards?
I would leave that to the council's discretion.
Okay, but it's really bad.
Just to emphasize, the punchline is even with the American Rescue Plan money, we are still looking at a three million dollar ongoing structural deficit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pepin? Did you have your?
Well, and just, just to follow up, you could conceivably use some of the American Rescue Act money to make sure we stay sort of closer to our budget as well. Fair to say?
That's fair to say, yes. And as outlined, please go ahead.
No, no, I had another question, so please continue your answer. Sorry.
I was going to say, I mentioned earlier that the, the chart for the long-term financial plan, it does show if the council were to choose to use the American Rescue Plan money to partially offset the significant revenue losses that we're going to experience over the next five years, that's effectively what it's showing. So that's essentially answering your question of yes, we could use it to offset our, our budgetary expected losses.
I just had one, one other quick question that is not a big picture question, but a smaller picture question, but every dollar counts. It is that there is a lag when one is, when a, an entity is seeking VLF shortfall money, correct? Is there, are, are we in a current lag right now where we're waiting for some additional funds? And if so, what is that amount?
We are. The shortfall that is currently in the state's proposed, sorry, the governor's proposed budget does have ten million dollars for the countywide shortfall from last fiscal year. That is incorporated into our property tax projections for next fiscal year. The city's share of that ten million dollar shortfall is six hundred thousand dollars.
I thought, I thought all ten was ours. You had me going there. Six hundred grand, okay. Well, that's the end of that. Okay. I, I think I've got the big picture, and I appreciate Councilmember Gofles' remarks as well as to what it's looking like for us.
Other questions from council? I have a question. For the five million that you're, that you are saying that we could use for other one-time expenses, I mean, should we, should we use that? I mean, given the, given the projections that you're, you're having, that you're giving us, that's the maximum you think, is it? Did you, when you were, when you were going over that recommendation, did you think it might be three million or four million? I'm just curious to how you got to that five million.
Let me go back to that slide to help illustrate how we got there.
Thank you.
So again, this is the, the general fund long-term financial plan over the next ten years, highlighting the peak of the rainy day reserve in the pre-pandemic year of fifty-four million dollars. The bottoming out of that comes in fiscal year twenty-seven at twenty-five million dollars. So effectively, we are drawing down on our rainy day reserve by thirty million dollars over that period of time. That is the, and because of that expected trend, we believe that that is the appropriate amount, that, that difference between the peak to trough is the appropriate amount for the rainy day reserve to prepare the city for the next recession. It is an inevitability. Now, if you look at the far right, the rainy day reserve for twenty thirty-one, we're looking at thirty-four million dollars. And really, that's, that's a rounding issue. It's pretty close to four million, five million dollars. If the council is interested in using a portion of the American Rescue Plan money for a soon-to-be-identified purpose, it could spend, use up to five billion of it and still have thirty million dollars left in the rainy day reserve by twenty thirty-one. That's how we came up with that, that amount.
Great, thank you. And my last question, getting back to the, the VLF, you know, we talked about how important it was to, you know, get, get help from perhaps our, our state legislatures. And I know that, that you have a lot of different things, a lot of different avenues where we're trying to get help there. But I wanted to just revisit again, do you, do you feel like you're getting all the support? Like, I know that, that every single council member in affected cities should be, this should be a top priority for them. And I bet that every single one of us would be willing to place as many calls and, and do whatever it takes to, to move the needle here. And I just want to make sure that we're doing all that. The official channels that the city staff does, but also other channels. And so tell us what you need to help get that important thing happening. And, and I just want to make sure you're asking, you're asking us, and we're do, we're supporting you as much as possible.
Drew, go ahead.
Sure, please.
Yes, thank you. So initially, the, the information on the shortfall is going to be coming out in February. But because the numbers were continuing to move, that, that, the, the ninety-six million dollar shortfall for San Mateo County was only available late last week. Tomorrow, the county controller's office is meeting with the county finance directors. And then Thursday, the county controller's office and county council will be meeting with the city managers group to reconvene that, that task force based on the latest information. Step one will be to file the, file the claim for the shortfall for this year, which the department, the state department of finances has told us that it, it doesn't want until August or September. But then step two, which in the, in the interim time, will be to start talking about the longer term solution of trying to fix this, this issue structurally, so that it doesn't continue to be an issue every year. And at that point, we definitely will be looking for our elected officials to engage with, with the state elected official. So, so there are definitely more to come on that. It's been in a little bit of a lull for the past couple of months, just because the numbers were continuing to move. But now that we have the, the number of the ninety-six and a half million dollar shortfall, things will start to move again quickly with this, with trying to resolve this issue.
Great, thank you very much. All right, do we have any more questions from council before we open up public comment? Councilmember Pepin?
Just a comment, I did actually follow up with one of our state legislators on Friday about it. Or today, actually, we spoke on Friday and followed up again today. So we'll continue to work it for sure.
Thanks. Councilmember Lee?
Thanks. Rich, I was wondering if you could, you could help us sort of contextualize the difference between our recession-proofing and unassigned fund balance during the, the dot-com bust and the Great Recession versus how we've planned for, you know, resilience and, and fiscal sustainability today? And how that relates to the, you know, your analysis of, of, you know, setting a goal for ourselves to have, you know, have thirty million dollars so that we can weather those peak-to-trough moments when, when the next one hits. So if you, if you don't mind, you know, just kind of putting some more color on that. And then my part two question is, you know, is there a policy opportunity for us to, to put some more sort of structure into our, you know, our, our budgeting to, to like sort codify that, that number or that goal that we're setting for ourselves for an unassigned fund balance? So that when we're doing, when we're having these budget conversations, that, that we're all working off of the same information with, with clear expectations?
Thank you. I'm going to start addressing your question backwards. The first is that this is the perfect time for the council to revisit its reserve policy parameters. As a part of the budget process, in the budget document, in the index or the appendices are the list of all of the city's financial policies, the reserve policy being one of them. Based on the trend that we foresee over the next ten years, we could certainly add that parameter to the reserves policy of setting a specific goal of thirty million dollars for the rainy day reserve in the policy. The second, and I'll probably need to rely on my predecessor, who is fortunately now the city manager, to provide some color commentary on the city's, I guess, a contrast of the fiscal position of the city during the Great Recession, contrast that with now. Now, we are well-prepared. If you look at what the city was, had anticipated the recession, it was just unsure of when exactly it was going to happen. Fortunately, the city is in a favorable position, looking at the pre-pandemic year, drawing down on that, that rainy day reserve. Contrast that with the Great Recession, when the, the general fund reserve was in a far less advantageous position, where that cushion, that rainy day reserve is not there, and the council is forced to act very quickly with pretty structural changes to the operations, namely furloughs, any layoffs. We have the benefit of having that, that rainy day reserve to rely on, so that we don't need immediate actions because of the, the immediate and severe impact of COVID nineteen. I wanted to defer to Drew, since he was here during the Great Recession, to provide additional color commentary.
I think you, I think you captured it very well. I would just emphasize that, you know, the, the, the goal of the, of having a rainy day fund is to, to maintain services during times of, of economic downturn. As, as opposed to when we have money, spending it, and then when we, when we don't have money, we, we pull back. Right? That, that creates really uneven service levels for the community, is really difficult to, to set expectations. And when, when you have a rainy day reserve, you have that sort of flexibility to weather, you know, economic downturns and allow for the maintenance of service levels. That's, you know, it's, it's really a luxury and really good for the community overall. And so that's what we're intending to do. And, and prior to, as, as Rich mentioned, you know, when we were in the Great Recession, I think our, our reserve, I think our reserve amount was about sixteen percent of the general fund. And, and when you're at that low and that thin of a position from a reserves perspective, when you start to see your revenues going down, you have to take really immediate actions to ensure that you can remain solvent. And I know the city had to do that back during the Great Recession. And then as a result of that, really built up those reserves to a really strong position to, to where we were pre-pandemic, which has allowed us to, I think, weather the storm pretty well overall.
So just, just at a human level, thinking about the organization of our municipal government and the difference between the last recession where we were furloughing and this, this crisis, this global pandemic and economic crisis, where we were actually sustaining jobs and transferring our full-time, nine full-time equivalent staff to directly serve the, the community in, in their time of need. So for me, that, that, that really puts a, a point on, on this in terms of where we are organizationally and the fiscal discipline that it's taken to get there. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Benia? You're on mute.
I wanted to speak a little bit when we're thinking about ways to help us dig out of this. And one, one of the, I know the tried and true methods of improving the economy is to create jobs. Basically, that's what happened in the Great Recession back in the thirties. And I know that the president is now proposing a huge public works investment, which covers more than traditional public works, but many sectors. And I think we should take a close look at what ways we may be able to take advantage of that proposed source of funding and to create jobs. Also, just one, I think that I can think of really quick off the tip of my tongue, and I know Diane has councilmember Pepin has been working on this, but it is sea level rise. There's going to need to be huge engineering projects throughout the Bay Area and, and even certainly other areas on the West Coast here. I don't know how close we are to having any engineering for that, but we should make sure that we talk with our, whoever's got pieces of this to start developing that, so that when the money is made available, if it is, but when it is, we're ready to apply for some of that money. Because, you know, they're always looking for the quote-unquote shovel-ready. So fortunately, in the paradigm that's being cast by the president right now, not everything has a shovel going for it. So we may be able to find ways to fit in there with some of our needs. I think we should take a serious look at that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, if there are not any other questions, I want to like to open up public comment. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker with a hand.
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker with a hand raised, the Rich Hedges.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Rodriguez, it's a pleasure to be here talking to you tonight. Rich Lee. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Rich Lee, who's very adequate or above adequate with his job, has made a great presentation. And I will say, when this started, the news we had tonight has made you a bit sad, I think, but it's better than I expected. So sometimes you, you take the good with the bad, and this is better than the worst that we expected. I have some questions. First of all, I know I've been involved in state boards when the state has come down and grabbed our funding, even though it's from license fees for the recessions. I'd like to know how we got into this in lieu of vehicle license fees. I can't remember that. And the other issue is, I worked very hard to pass measure W, raised thirty seven thousand dollars, did several mailings as a citizens committee, and I'm troubled by losing two hotels. Because we lose two hotels, we not only lose the T O T, we lose the property tax when the county owns it. So I want to know where those hotels are and how badly we're getting hurt by this. So those are my two questions. How did we get this state contrivance within Lou fees for the vehicle license fee? And which hotels are we losing?
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can respond to those questions.
Let's finish going with, is assuming public comment is no more public comment, no more members?
I have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. So now I will close public comment and please, Rich, go ahead.
So thank you to Mr. Hedges for his questions. First question is the V L F shortfall. How did this happen? I will give a condensed version of the history of that. I believe it was night. Andrew, correct me if, if I'm getting this wrong. Two thousand four, as a part of the agreement for Prop one A, the state wanted to reduce the V L F rate to effectively nothing. The cities obviously would be negatively financially impacted. As a way to offset that impact, the state agreed to swap property tax for the reduction in V L F. How they paid for that was school districts that were non basic aid. So non basic aid are school districts that do not meet their minimum funding requirement as defined by the state. They, the property tax from those school districts backfill the V L F property tax that's owed to the cities. There are twenty six school districts in the, in San Mateo County. At present, based on the current estimates from the county, there are twenty one basic aid school districts, which leaves only five non basic aid school districts to backfill the V L F that is owed to the cities. As I mentioned previously in the presentation, that shortfall between the V L F that is owed to the cities and the amount that is available from those five remaining non basic aid school districts is short by ninety six point two million dollars. It's widely believed by the county that over the next five to six years, every single basic aid, sorry, every single non basic aid school district will become basic aid. So what is now, I just want to go back one fiscal year. Last fiscal year, the V L F shortfall was ten million dollars. Fast forward to the current fiscal year, that shortfall has increased tenfold. Over time, based on a pretty rudimentary analysis I've done, if the county's estimate comes to fruition with every single school district in San Mateo County becoming basic aid, that V L F shortfall could grow to be in excess of three hundred billion dollars. With, with the city's share of that at upwards of seventeen to eighteen million dollars. So it is a very significant issue. And I apologize for always having bad news for the council. Second question for Mr. Hedges was which two hotels? That is the Katrina Hotel and Stone Villa.
And it is that the county was going to offer some money if those did come out of service.
Correct.
All right. But the county did emphasize that we cannot be, expect to be made completely whole. Okay, great. I'm going to bring it back to council now and for additional questions or any comments or emotion.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution for the one point nine million that's needed out of the general fund.
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please follow?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Golsos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Rich, for that long, great discussion. Thank you. Don't blame you for being the bearer of bad news. We are going to move on to a new business, item number twenty one. Ordinance introduction, protected trees, ordinance and administrative guidelines approval. And we have Matthew Freed, our manager arborist with us this evening. Welcome, Matthew.
Thank you. I'm Matthew Freed. I've been the managing arborist in San Mateo for just over six years now. And tonight, I'm going to talk to you about a new slash updated ordinance for protected trees in the city of San Mateo. Just looking over the agenda for my presentation, we'll talk about the background, how we got here, the process. I'll highlight some of the significant changes to these ordinance updates and conclude with my recommendation that you accept them. So they, currently, we have two different ordinances for what I'm now going to call protected trees. It's two classes of protected trees. Heritage trees are based on their large size. Street trees are based on their location in the public right of way. It's two different chapters, but they both have the same goal, which is to make sure that we maintain, you know, healthy, vibrant trees in the city for all the myriad benefits that trees provide, you know, enhance public health, reduce traffic speeds, stormwater interception, carbon sequestration, and arguably, you know, most important, just beauty and livability for a city. The last time that either ordinance was revised was in two thousand and seven. And in my six years here, I've through resident interactions, through evaluating applications for street tree work or heritage tree removal, have just noticed some things that aren't really up to date with current best management practices, things that are unclear to the public, things that are either a hassle to the public, a unnecessary hassle, or in some cases that just don't protect the trees well enough, frankly. So we set out a year or more ago to start compiling a list of potential updates for the purposes of, you know, maintaining the spirit of the two ordinances, enhancing the clarity as it's read and as it's enforced, to continue to maintain and even increase our city's tree canopy and to make it easier to administer the ordinance. Little graphic at the bottom there just shows that what we're proposing tonight is that for clarity's sake, that those two existing ordinances get put into, you know, basically get abolished and put, and, and we adopt a new ordinance thirteen point four zero that will be called protected trees and cover both of those classes of trees. So, you know, my experience and the experience of my staff over the past, probably, it's really now it's been six plus years. A review of recently adopted ordinances in area cities, pretty much every city on the peninsula you can name. And several of them had, had gone through very rigorous processes recently and had some things that I borrowed from pretty heavily that I thought were really good. We had three different external sort of senior consulting arborists review it for content and for clarity and provide feedback. We made some changes based on their feedback. We were assisted throughout the whole time by Gabrielle Whelan in the city attorney's office. And we presented to the Park and Recreation Commission four separate times, concluding with the most recent time in February where they recommended that we come to council with the hopes of having this new ordinance adopted. So the sort of six of the major changes for, for this new ordinance is we changed the classification of a heritage tree. And I'm going to go through each of these in a little bit more detail in subsequent slides. You know, we made the, the tree protection plan and the development tree disclosure requirements clearer and a little bit more robust. Took out an onerous requirement that allows for the appeal of a tree that's been approved for removal based on the fact that it's dead or dangerous. We have added a nominal appeal fee for the appeal of permit decisions. And we have introduced some flexibility in the tree replacement requirements and also created what we are referring to as the administrative guidelines, which is a supporting document to be read and interpreted in, in conjunction with, with the actual city code. So for each of these, on the left is what we currently protect and how we protect it. So we have these five species or genuses at the bottom left corner. And you can see that we currently protect, starting at ten inches in diameter, which is really small. And in my research from the past arborists for the city, anybody I could ask, no one had any idea how those species were chosen. And I couldn't really think of, of any good reason, with the exception perhaps of the oak, which is our most kind of native to, to San Mateo. And then every other species, no matter what it is, was protected at sixteen inches in diameter or greater. So for the purpose of simplification, we're proposing that the only tree that has a special call out to be protected at a smaller diameter would be oak trees, and they would remain at the ten inches as is. And that all other species would now be protected or would be considered heritage trees beginning at fifteen inches in diameter. And that, you know, we, I write at that number, it's just, it's more, it's much more consistent with what others, with what other cities are doing. Many are at twelve inches. And so we proposed going down by an inch to fifteen inches. Tree disclosure requirements. Currently, there's, we've had some situations where, you know, applicants for development are only required to disclose the trees that are on their actual property. And so they'll, you know, that'll get approved, they'll be protecting those trees, but then they'll go and they'll start digging on their property. And they will damage through, through damaging the roots of a neighboring tree. And so we want to make sure that when we're reviewing plans for building, that trees on neighboring parcels are considered if they're within a reasonable distance, in this case, thirty feet from the construction activities. In this case, it doesn't mean that, you know, you're necessarily going to have additional requirements if you have neighbor trees nearby, but at least that city staff will be able to review them and determine if they need additional protections. Wave for dead and dangerous trees, you know, so, so now when I go out, if I approve a tree removal application, we notify the neighbors and they have a ten day window to appeal. We got a lot of pushback for this, understandably, because people were like, this tree is stone dead. You're a professional arborist, you've seen it. Why are we waiting ten days to remove a dead tree? And I didn't have a good answer. So we're proposing that if, if I've gone out and put eyes on the tree and have determined that it is dead or that it is very dangerous as in will fall shortly, that we can issue an emergency permit without an appeal window and without, yeah, without giving people ten days to then, you know, jam up this removal, resulting in just a quicker, more expedient permit issuance and the ability to responsibly mitigate unsafe trees. Appeal fee, just to ensure that parties that are going to get in the way of somebody's, you know, earnest removal application are invested enough to pay a nominal fee and fill out a form. The fee would be on par with what it costs to apply for a tree removal, which is currently about eighty dollars and would be updated, you know, annually or whenever the city's fee schedule is updated. This would only apply for appeals to the Park and Recreation Commission and to the city council. So there is a layer of appeal to the director of Parks and Recreation that would have no charge. So you'd be appealing the decision of the director of Parks and Recreation before fees were instituted. And this fee would not apply to the permit applicant. So that means if I apply to remove a tree on my property and managing arborist says no, and the director of Parks and Recreation concurs with the managing arborist, it's my property, I'm upset with the decision, I still, I don't pay the fee to bring it to the park and recreation. It's if I'm the neighbor and I am staying involved in this on the third, you know, second or third level of appeal, I will have to pay a fee and fill out a one page form. So this is where we changed up the replant requirements. Currently, it doesn't matter what size heritage tree you remove. Your responsibility is to replant one twenty four inch box tree. So you could be removing something that's the size of the Bay at Bay Tree Park, and you have to replant a twenty four inch box tree, which is, you know, six to eight feet tall and two inches thick. Or you could be removing a ten inch oak tree. So here, we basically added an additional quantity of replant for trees greater than thirty inches in diameter, which is huge and it is a very small subset of the applications we get. And then we allowed people this option to plant a smaller tree, in some cases, a fifteen gallon tree from a preferred category. The preferred categories, the preferred category is made up of a list of about five, five or six species of trees that city staff has decided are trees the city wants to have for ecological, ecological value and just for being well adapted to the environment, being especially drought tolerant and achieving a large size and maturity. So essentially, if you're willing to plant an oak tree, a native oak tree, you may be able, you know, for that middle category there, to plant just a fifteen gallon tree and save yourself a few hundred dollars versus planting a twenty four inch box tree, because the ultimate size of that tree will be greater and the city and the environment will benefit more greatly from it. Should you choose not to plant, these fees on the right are what the city would be collecting from you as an in lieu fee. We can't force anybody to plant, and these fees are directly tethered to what it costs the city to plant those sized plant material through our contractors, based on the last few years of contracting data. And then the administrative guidelines is a companion publication. It's an idea that I got from a neighboring city. It is, it's a document that is, should read in much more plain English than the sort of legalese or ordinances that ordinances often have and be more interpretable and more approachable for somebody to look, to, to look at and to read and to allow us to add things that maybe don't, don't fit well into an ordinance. So if there's a visual aid or a diagram, that can go in there as opposed to, you know, there's just no way to put that in the ordinance. And it would include stuff that's more likely to need updates. So just things that change that we don't want to, you know, have to do a full revision each time. And could be, you know, these things could be revised without modifying the chapter. The replacement sizes is probably, replacement sizes in Lou fees is probably the most sort of pertinent thing that would be in there. And then also our species replant list. So we do provide a list of species that we recommend people choose from. And that changes, that can change, you know, every couple of years, just based on pest outbreaks and what's in favor or what's available for nurseries. So with that, the, the recommendation from staff is to introduce an ordinance to amend the San Mateo municipal code to add a new chapter thirteen point four zero protected trees to replace the existing chapters thirteen point three five street trees and chapter thirteen point five two heritage trees. and also approve the Protected Trees Ordinance Administrative Guidelines.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council members? I'm not seeing any. I'd like to open up public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one speaker, Rich Hedges.
Boy, everybody must be in bed tonight. I think this is a very important ordinance. It's been around in various forms. I think Mr. Fried's done a good job in revising it. Very much in favor of it. I will tell you that our our development was built in the late seventies, so we're about forty two years into a lot of beautiful trees. We've lost a few over the years, and thanks to the heritage tree ordinance, we have not had trouble replacing it. See, we have water views, and there are some people that live in our complex, some don't live here any longer, that want nothing in front of their view between the water and their unit, which means they would like a clear cut presence in front of them. And we've been very fortunate. We have fourteen acres of landscape, fifty five acre development, and we are just really heavily intrigued. Think of Mr. Fried has been here, he knows that. And so we're very supportive of that. It's helped clean the air where we live, and we live in an area with a lot of pollution because it's the corner of ninety two and one oh one. So we're supportive of this ordinance. Hopefully, the city council will be too, and thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no other hands raised.
Thank you. I will close public comment, bring it back to the council for closing comments or motion. Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yes, I'd like to say that I think that anything that simplifies what has been some difficult dealings over trees is greatly welcome. And I'm not sure about the actual cost of replacing those trees, but I think that certainly there are hidden costs that the average person doesn't see because there is government. And people need to make sure that things are the way they need to be. So I support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other?
Good work, Matthew.
Anyone else? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the the new tree ordinance, Protected Trees. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call?
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Well, wait, is this our, hold on, is this is our first reading and where are we on that?
Yes.
Yes.
And so we still vote on a first reading?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Pappan.
You can call me mayor, it's okay. Yes.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great job, Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move on to reports and announcements. Are there any reports and or announcements? Deputy Mayor Bonilla wants to kick things off.
Yeah, I would like to start by speaking on behalf and in support of all the speakers who called in regarding H R twenty three oh seven. This is a measure that we actually did submit support letter for back in twenty eighteen. It is the carbon fee and dividend that the Citizens Climate Lobby has been working on for so long in the last rendition that died in Congress. I think as a result of our support and and many others, our Congresswoman Spears supported this measure. Currently, she has not taken a position on it, but I think it would help if we were to issue some language and support. So I would ask that we ask the staff to form a letter that we can enact as soon as possible. Thank you.
I'd like to take it up also.
Me third.
Okay, we got unanimous approval on that. Any other reports and announcements? I have something I just wanted to bring up. You know, for the general plan subcommittee, when we when Commissioner Adam Lorraine gave up his seat, we replaced him with Ken Chen, and he was kind of representing the the school board, which I think was a great addition. But I I do think that this council should consider adding the sustainability and and infrastructure commissions, that second seat that was that was taken away. And and I would go as far as thinking that we should appoint Commissioner Lorraine back to that seat. So I just wanted to throw that out there if if others might might agree with that.
I think that's a great idea, and and I would also be interested in considering expanding the the subcommittee to include our our Community Relations Commission representation as well.
Any other, any other thoughts on that?
I could add that I think that's a good idea, too. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm definitely for adding Commissioner Lorraine. Not not sure I support expanding the the subcommittee.
Oh, I see. I I support that, too.
Yep.
I support Adam Lorraine back on.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, you're taking a vote to bring an item forward to discuss this?
Yes, or maybe consent calendar. Any any other announcements? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.